Good morning, everyone. Welcome back. We are meeting once again as the C O D in lieu of Senate 2021. We met yesterday for about four hours and we're scheduled to do the same today, hopefully to conclude our business. In just a few moments, I will set the agenda for the day or remind us of where we're at in the agenda with more detail, but just briefly before we do our devotions, we're going to start with Advisory Committee Five, so that we can make sure we get the candidates approved. And then when we are done with that, we will move to Committee Number Four, doing as much of our work as we can. We'll take a break at one o'clock. And at one thirty, we come and we will do the approval of our candidates. We have a little ceremony planned there. The candidates will be joining us. And when that is done, we will conclude with whatever other business that we still have on our agenda for the day. So without anything further from me, I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Zach King and Kurt Sellus, who are going to be leading us in our devotional time today.
Paul, can I interrupt for a minute?
Sure.
I'm sorry to do this, but I have a rather urgent prayer request. I just got off the phone with Michelle Cool, we all know as a member here.
Yeah.
Apparently about a half an hour ago, her daughter was held up at gunpoint and taken away in the car with the people that held her up. She did manage to escape a few minutes ago, but we're not sure of her condition. Michelle and her husband are racing to the scene, of course, to be with her. So Michelle won't be with us today, but Michelle, of course, was very upset about this and she asked for our prayers and thoughts and hopefully, yeah, hopefully things will work out, but it's very traumatic, of course, for her daughter. So we don't know how many details right now, but if we could remember that in our prayers individually and together as a group today, she would definitely appreciate that.
Thanks, Andy. Let's go right to prayer now, even before we go to our scheduled devotional time. Let's pray together as a group. Dear Heavenly Father, we're just hearing this news from Andy about Michelle's daughter being held up at gunpoint and actually taken with the people who held her up for a period of time. We understand that she has gotten away, but our sister Michelle and of course, her husband are on the way. And this is very upsetting and overwhelming. Lord, we, our hearts break for Michelle and having to deal with this. Our hearts break with the reminder of a broken and sin-filled world and how quickly our lives can turn with a phone call with an incident. And so, Lord, we pray specifically now for safety for Michelle's daughter. We pray for justice. We pray for whatever healing to the trauma that needs to take place, that that will take place. And we're praying for Michelle right now, as she's not with us, and we'll all be praying individually as well. We thank you for the body of Christ in which we are able to hold one another up and we'll certainly be doing that throughout this day. So, Lord, even as we begin our meetings, as we have a devotional time, as we reflect on global missions, which Michelle is so keen to be a part of, we acknowledge our immediate need for Michelle's daughter and ask for your goodness and grace there. All of this, we pray, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, let's all be continuing to pray for that, but let me turn it over now to Zachary King and Kurt Sellus for our mission, for our opening devotions. Kurt and/or Zachary, are you there?
I think Zach was trying to talk, but he's not muted. So, yeah, he was going to go first, but maybe if he's having some technical difficulties, I could. Zach, can you? We're not hearing you, Zach. I don't think this has ever happened to Zach before.
Hello, hello. All right, there we go.
There we are.
Always something. Well, it's good to be with you this morning. Yeah, it's hard to start off the day with that news, but of course, we start off the day in confidence of, yeah, the paternal care of our Heavenly Father, so we'll entrust Michelle and her family to that. This morning, we've already started out with prayer, so we'll just go right to the text that Kurt and I wanted to share with you all at the beginning of our day. We're going to be having some discussion about global mission today. And so one of the texts that really define our approach to global mission is Acts, Chapter One, Verses Six through Eight. So if you have the text there, feel free to look at it, but I will read it for you. This is Acts, Chapter One, Verses Six through Eight. "Then they gathered around him and asked him, 'Lord, are you at this time going to restore the kingdom to Israel?'" "He said to them, 'It is not for you to know the times or the dates the Father has set by his own authority, but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you, and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem and all Judea and Samaria and to the ends of the earth.'" This is God's word for us this morning. Thanks be to God. If you're like me, you've gone on a number of trips. Maybe I've gone on more trips than you have because of my 12 years living overseas. But of course, one of the questions that we hear often is, are we there yet? You know, have we arrived yet? Or are we to the position where we're going to finally conclude this odyssey? To put it in another way, and you know, as we get into Acts, Chapter One, Verses Six through Eight, we're at a, are you there yet moment in the life and ministry of Jesus and the disciples. And so, you know, you will remember that it's been a long road for the disciples. They've started out from a band of fisherpeople, tax collectors, and you know, various journeymen that have been engrafted into this body of disciples that Jesus put together. They've gone from being, you know, very ignorant of what's going on around them to having more understanding to see miracles, to thinking they know what's going on, to being knocked back a few pegs. Then, of course, to Jesus' death, to the separation and betrayal, and then finally to Jesus' resurrection and then the hope, and then finally, at this moment of the ascension, thinking they've arrived. And now is the time when they're finally going to get all the answers they hoped for. And I think that's often where we are, you know, wondering, are we there yet? And when we read this text, Jesus is answering that question. He's saying, you know, you've come a long way, but there's still a path ahead. And that path ahead is the path of global mission that we want to talk about this morning. So, you know, as we reflect on Acts, Chapter One, Verses Six through Eight, we see the different horizons of mission, the piece of the road that's still in front of us, the mission work beginning in Jerusalem, expanding to all Judea, then to Samaria, and finally to the ends of the earth. And one of the way I often think of this verse, and I think it's helpful for us to think about these four horizons of mission in our own terms, and so that we can really internalize what Jesus was talking about here. And if we're thinking about Jerusalem, we're thinking about sort of that closest circle of mission and of ministry. And that, of course, is our family, our home, our church body. And even there, we're called to, you know, share the gospel, to represent our Lord Jesus Christ and to share the hope that he has and that he shared with us. And then we think about that next step of mission, you know, that expanding circle, moving on to Judea. Now Judea, of course, is really, you know, the place where we're very familiar, where we share culture, where we share language, where we share sort of an understanding and a common ground with those around us. So that could be our neighborhood, that can be our workplace, could even be the grocery store. But expanding out from there to the next horizon of mission, we think about Samaria. Of course, I won't take time to get into it, but I think we all know a little bit about how Jews like Jesus and the disciples regarded Samaritans. And of course, they were certainly the other. And they were, you know, a people that were related to the Jews, but of course, very different in their religion and the way that they approached Yahweh, the way they approached the God of the Jewish people. And they were different ethnically, and we think about our own context. There's difference ethnically, religiously, and our sort of Samaria. And then we push that space out to the ends of the earth. And that, of course, is the space of global international mission beyond borders, across oceans, in other countries, with other cultures and different ethnic groups. And God calls us to mission in all of these different horizons. Now, I think I've used my time here, so Kurt's got a few reflections on the rest of that verse that talks about the Holy Spirit and the Spirit's work.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address the C O D. A little caveat here, yeah, I usually try to follow directions, and I was working on something that, you know, Zach and I had talked about, but when it came down to it, I thought, this is such a short amount of time. I'd rather tell you a story that I think exhibits, illustrates so powerfully the work of the Holy Spirit. So one of the joys that I have as the Director of Reframe Ministries is the seeing the stories that come across my desk of how the Holy Spirit is working around the world in North America and in the places that we work with our nine international partnerships. And I remember some time ago, a story about seven young people in the nation of Bhutan who came to know Jesus Christ. I don't know if you know anything about Bhutan. It's a small nation in a really unfortunate geopolitical spot, beautiful place, but sandwiched between India and China and really complicated place. Complicated also because of the infrastructure. Communication is hard there. It's a mountainous place. I think it's largely undeveloped, spectacularly beautiful, but largely undeveloped. So communication there, communication of the gospel is really difficult. But it's even more difficult in Bhutan because it's a Buddhist state. I think actually the leader of Bhutan is some kind of Bodhisattva, some kind of religious figure, and hits his job to run the country, but also to maintain that Buddhist identity, which makes sharing the gospel almost impossible in Bhutan. The infrastructure, the communication, and especially the religious background there in Bhutan. And yet, these seven young people came to know Jesus Christ. They came to know Jesus Christ through radio messages. The radio producer was in one part of Bhutan. He made the messages. He had to send them out of the country because you can't broadcast Christian messages in Bhutan or India or China, had to be broadcast from another remote location through short wave. You probably, most of you think short wave, oh, that's something that was used decades ago. It still has a use in places like Bhutan and India. Anyway, so these seven young people heard the message about Jesus Christ. Perhaps for many of them, it was the first time. And long story short, communication back and forth with the radio producer through the power of the Holy Spirit, these seven young people came to know Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior. And I don't know the details now, but I believe there's been a small group of Christians who constitute a fellowship or a church in that place. And we had a picture on our website for some time of these seven young people being baptized in an icy cold mountain stream. What a wonderful picture of the power of media. I mean, it reminds us of Isaiah, Chapter 55, the promise that God's word will not return to him void. It also reminds us in the context of our passage this morning of the gospel going out, the Holy Spirit working in us, made in the image of God, creative, figuring out how to work over, through, around barriers, and above all, the power of the Holy Spirit and the promise of being witnesses in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and to the ends of the world, including Bhutan. That's the power of media, to reach over through geographical barriers, ideological barriers, political barriers, religious barriers. That's the power of the Holy Spirit, and media can be such a good way to do that. So many, you know, evils of media, but potential power too, with the Holy Spirit speaking to human hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. We wrap up our time of devotion. So, well, this is all going to be kind of a devotional time. We're going to give a little bit of an update on global mission and see how, you know, the Holy Spirit is working on those different horizons of missions, as we read about in Acts, Chapter One, Verses Six through Eight. But let me conclude this brief time with prayer. Lord Jesus, we give you thanks and praise for the work that you are engaged in. Your Holy Spirit is ahead of us, Lord, in Bhutan and every place around the world, and even in our own neighborhoods, for all of us that are joining on this call, Lord Jesus. And we do thank you for that. And now, Lord, continue to open our hearts and minds as we share a little bit about global mission together, seeing how you are at work in your world. We give you thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, for the rest of the time, Kurt and I are going to, kind of in a devotional kind of way, are going to give you an update that you would have gotten if you read your Senate materials. We filed, of course, a report, our normal Senate Report, 2021 Report. And we're going to give you a little summary, and it's going to conclude with a brief video. So each of us are going to share about 10 minutes, and part of that is going to be a video. And so I'm going to go ahead and see if I can share my screen, Lord willing. This is going to work. Okay, I hope you're all seeing a slide presentation there. Is that right? Someone give me a hands up or thumbs up if you're seeing it. Okay. Excellent. Well, I'm going to dive into this, share a few slides with you all before we get to our video. Hold on just a second here. Let me change that layout. All right. Well, a little bit about Resonate Global Mission. I want to start off with a little bit of reflection on where we are in terms of how we as an organization navigated the pandemic. There's a lot in the Senate Report about how we did that as an organization. And yeah, God has been in this time, has certainly been one of those times of great challenge, of great learning, of being pushed and pressed in many different directions. And there's a lot of reasons for that, and let me talk a little bit about them. So, you know, when we think about the ministry, our ministry over the last year, really over the last 15 or 16 months since March 2020, we really need to kind of dive back and to think about how mission happens, at least for us as Resonate, as a global mission organization. At its heart, the ministry, the gospel mission ministry that we have is really a ministry of a relationship. It happens in the medium of a relationship, and of course, the message is Christ crucified and resurrected. And so the big question moving into this COVID period is, how does that medium work? How does that medium work when the physical presence that really is the bedrock of that relational medium that we have in gospel ministry? How does that work in a time when we're called or asked to be separate from each other physically because of the pandemic? And it turns out that it is indeed complicated, and yet God is certainly in it. And so, yeah, we're, we want to express our thanksgiving to you all as council delegates, as our constituents, as our board, and for your support and prayers for us through the COVID-19 crisis. And, you know, this has been a time in which our ministries and mission workers have needed a lot of extra support to transition to a new way of doing ministry. But we've gained in our time as we've processed the experience of COVID. Our new technology has allowed us, our new technology, in some ways new to us, this developing technology has allowed us to share the gospel both far and wide. And just a few quick examples of that, Encounter Church in Kentwood, a church plant that Resonate has supported. Obviously, like many of your churches, offers its services and ministry opportunities through YouTube. And so they saw that subscriber base increase by 222%. So, you know, this is a story that many of you have experienced as well in your own ministries. Also, you know, our missionaries who primarily do their work through physical presence, through that relational presence, mentored, supported, trained, and trained indigenous leaders through WhatsApp. Some of you probably know what WhatsApp is through Zoom and other streaming platforms. And so a lot of that bedrock ministry was able to continue despite the effects of the pandemic. And then even church planning internationally, a church plant for newcomers, for diaspora people in Berlin, which is led by David Kromiga, Mary Butine, has met twice a week throughout the whole pandemic via Zoom. And so for people who live, you know, across a big city like Berlin, where the Kromigas are ministering, you know, it's very convenient to be able to check in online, and more people have been attending that church plant during the pandemic than there were before. You know, we've also learned that staying home near, closer to our homes gives us new opportunities to reach out to neighbors. And a good example is Lynette, who's a member at River Terrace Christian Reformed Church in East Lansing, only about an hour down the road from where I sat in Kentwood, Michigan. She participated in adjoining God in the neighborhood cohort. That actually, that's a cohort that grew out of our Go Local program, which is a program for church renewal for mission. And she got into that program, which is a digital program now in the fall of 2020. And because of the program, she really made an effort to get out and to meet her neighbors. And now three households are meeting together, developing friendship and ministry together. And so Lynette says this happened just by being outside, outside of her home. I'm looking for these opportunities more and more. So that's another example of what we've gained. But we've also been asking a lot of different questions because of COVID. And I just want to point out a few of those here real quick. And, you know, before the COVID pandemic, we're often asking sort of church building-related and service-related questions, you know, how do we keep young people in the church? What should we, what time should our worship service be to make it accessible to unchurched people? How do we get more people to come to worship service on Sunday mornings? How do we get neighbors to come to our church? And because of the pandemic, now we've been asking more mission-specific questions in terms of how we connect locally in our churches. You know, what can our young people teach us about being a community of faith outside of the church doors? How can we make better use of our church building seven days a week as a blessing to our neighborhood? How do we make discipleship available in different ways and different times? How do we see God at work in our neighborhood? And so that is a different focus that God has helped to produce through his Spirit during this time that we've been dealing with the COVID issues. And, you know, just to wrap up here as we go into our video, just a brief reminder about what Resonate is up to in our connection to the Christian Reformed Church. So congregations such as your congregation are really our primary ministry partners and most important ministry partners as a mission agency. And we're committed to continuing and strengthening our work with you, with your congregations. We want to help you deepen your passion for mission. We want to help you connect and facilitate the sending of your mission workers, both internationally, around the world, and in your own community. We want to strengthen your capacity, want to help you develop tools, disciplines, and capacities for the mission work that God is calling you to do. And we also want to amplify the impact that you and your church have in your neighborhood around the world. And, you know, we want to connect you to other congregations, mission workers, and concepts that will enhance your mission impact in your neighborhood and your region and around the world. And so with that, I want to just move to our video that we're going to be sharing. And before Cassie queues up that video, let me just stop sharing here so that she can do that. Hold on just a second. I just want to express my appreciation for all of you and supporting this work. And I know we heard that Michelle isn't able to be here, but for the Global Missions Ministries Committee and the rest of you all who have supported this mission work and have shared in the classes and with your congregations, just want to say a big thank you for that ministry. And so Cassie, we'll turn it over to you to queue up the Resonate video.
It starts with the Holy Spirit. When the Holy Spirit works in someone's heart, God completely transforms them. And Christ's love echoes out into all areas of their life. This is God's mission, and the Holy Spirit invites each and every one of us to join in that mission. That's the work of Resonate Global Mission, the mission agency of the Christian Reformed Church. Resonate works to see more people experience Christ's love and live out their faith. The Christian Reformed Church has a long history of gospel witness. In fact, it started with the very first Christian Reformed congregation living out Christ's love in their community. But God's mission also stretches beyond our communities, and as the denomination grew, churches came together to cross cultural barriers. In 1888, the denomination's churches formed Christian Reformed Home Missions to share the gospel among indigenous populations within the United States. The work soon expanded overseas with a formation of Christian Reformed World Missions and sending missionaries to Nigeria and China. Since then, our involvement in God's mission has only grown. It has also changed. The world looks a lot different today than it did a century and a half ago. With travel and technology, our connected world has broken down barriers. Today, people groups move and relocate. Refugees flee their homes and seek safety in other countries. In many of our neighborhoods, it's common to hear languages spoken from all over the world, smell food from a variety of cultures, and see different types of clothing. All these changes mean that ministry changes too. That's why in 2017, Christian Reformed Home Missions and Christian Reformed World Missions joined together to become Resonate Global Mission. We are one agency with one mission, to see communities of disciples faithfully proclaiming and living out the good news of Jesus. Through Resonate, the Christian Reformed Church is working in more than 40 countries, including Canada and the United States. We send missionaries and volunteers, plant churches, support campus ministries, and train churches and people to live out the gospel in their own communities. We work through three key strategies: forming leaders, sending congregations, and connecting networks. You play an important role in this mission too. Jesus sends all of his followers into the world as his witnesses. Some are cults down the street, and others to the other side of the world. Resonate is here to help you and your church find your place in God's mission. We will help you deepen your passion for mission, strengthen your capacity to follow God on mission, and amplify the impacts you and your church have in your neighborhood and around the world. Near and far, our church follows the Holy Spirit's call to share the grace, hope, and love found in Jesus. We join the whole church to share the whole gospel with the whole world, and we can do more together than we can ever do on our own. Will you join us?
Thank you very much. Turn it over to Kurt now.
Thank you, Zach. So my presentation is a little bit different from Zach's, and I'd like to ask for our video to be shown first, and then I'll give a short update about some other things happening with us. And this is a bit more report than promotion, and I don't have any PowerPoint slides either. So Cassie, if you could show our video, and then I'd like to just say a couple of words, and I don't know if we'll have time or not, but maybe if there's a question or something too.
Hi, I'm Kurt Sellus, the Director of Reframe Ministries, the media ministry of the Christian Reformed Church. This is a moment where we would like to share just an update about some of the ministry that's taken place over the last year. We want to encourage you to support and to pray for our ministry and to share that excitement with those that you represent throughout the Christian Reformed Church. With the onset of the pandemic, we had to immediately drop everything and reorient all of our production towards addressing the spiritual needs of our audiences during this really, really difficult time. And, you know, we did that around the world, actually, wanted to be relevant, wanted to be speaking to people's hearts and inviting them to trust in Jesus and believe in his goodness and his sovereignty really over world history. You know, I don't know if you know this, but in Mexico, television production, Christian television production is actually against the law. And yet the state down there in Villa Hermosa, where the ministry is, asked our ministry team to create worship services on a weekly basis for the population there in the southern part of Mexico. So they've made some huge breakthroughs. We're so grateful for Reverend De La Cruz's leadership and for his team and for the continued growth of that ministry. So with our Indonesian ministry, we've been without a ministry leader. We were without a ministry leader for like five years. It was a really long, complicated process. It was a really long, complicated process that had some stumbling points. But finally, God led Reverend Arlyana La Rosa to come and be the ministry leader for Indonesia. He's done a great job. One of the shifts that he's made in the ministry is more from audio to video production. He's a great producer for videos. He's a great YouTube producer. And he's done that in Bahasa, which is the trade language of Indonesia, but also in his own mother tongue, which is Nias. And he's shifted the ministry a bit towards more visual productions. So one of the big changes for us this past year, our ministry is a name change. We want to assure everyone that the name has changed, Reframe Ministries, but we have not changed in terms of our vision, in terms of our commitment to sharing the gospel, helping people with discipleship and strengthening local churches. That will not change. So I've given you a lot of information about a wide amount of work around the world and using all this different technology. And I could overwhelm you with information about what we're doing. But the bottom line is, it comes down to individuals, individuals and their experience, their hearing about Jesus. So I invite you to enjoy this short video that focuses on the testimony of one woman in Burkina Faso, where our French ministry takes place.
Bon, pour moi c'était pas facile car je suis née dans une famille musulmane. Mes parents sont des musulmans. Bon, mais à un moment donné, mes parents devraient déménager subitement. D'où je devrais rester pour terminer mon année car l'année n'était pas à sa fin. Donc je suis allée résidez chez une tante qui était une chrétienne. Et un jour, elle m'a demandé de l'accompagner à l'église. Et lorsque nous sommes allés, j'ai vu que les gens de l'église aimait, il y avait la cohésion sociale, la joie de vivre. Les gens étaient pleins d'émotions. Et lorsque nous sommes rentrés, j'ai demandé à ma tante si je pouvais l'accompagner pour aller à l'église. Et elle a répondu oui. Et un jour, chaque jour lorsque on partait à l'église, c'était génial. Et un jour, un homme de Dieu a prêché et il a parlé de Dieu, de Jésus, quelqu'un qui nous aime inconditionnellement, quelqu'un qui est prêt à tout pour nous, quelqu'un qui nous a aimés en première position. Bah, moi j'ai manqué plus d'amour dans ma vie. Je me suis sentie vraiment touchée. Et j'étais vraiment touchée et j'ai décidé de donner ma vie à Jésus-Christ.
Thank you, Cassie. I know our time is short, but let me just add two quick updates that have happened recently with our ministry. One is, as you know, we have phased out of Haiti. I just wanted to say that by God's grace, the graciousness of our team there in Haiti, the process has gone very smoothly. And I'm glad to say that our staff has all landed other positions, some of them with SUSUWA, which is the CRC legal entity down there in Haiti. Our ministry director, Jackie Cherry, Reverend Jackie Cherry, he's going to be working with Compassion International as their church relations leader. So a good transition being taking place. And there'll be a final ceremony about that next week on Friday. And if you remember, just invite you to be praying for the group down there in Haiti. Then the last and final thing I want to say is just in the last couple of weeks, our Chinese ministry has been shut down in China. So it's a long, complicated story. Everything has evolved to be used through WeChat, this monster app. And it's great in terms of reach, in terms of accessibility, in terms of what you could do with it. But it's also very tightly controlled by the Chinese government. And we always knew it was going to be a possibility. And then one day, about three weeks ago, almost all Christian content was removed from WeChat. And so our ministry and other ministries around the world are really struggling to figure out what to do next. I heard from our ministry leader this morning, Jerry On, that they're thinking about revamping their website, which is such old technology for China and using more apps, which have their own challenges. Fortunately, they've developed in some other ways in terms of publications, books that can be used for evangelism. So they've got some other things going on, but it's really a difficult time for our staff, both in the United States and also there in China. So those are the things that I wanted to mention. I said something about questions. I don't think we have time for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kurt, and also Zach. Thank you for the devotional reflection from the Book of Acts, the reminder of the way the Holy Spirit moves. It moves through media. The Spirit moves through our missionaries, both here and in all sorts of different places all around the world, and we're very grateful for that. So thanks for the stories that you've shared and the reminder of the important mission. And I noted that both of you spent a considerable amount of time reflecting on the pandemic. We're reminded that all of us in our ministry contexts, not only our agencies, but our local churches and Christian schools. And you know, all of us have been deeply affected by the pandemic. And the goal, of course, would to make sure that the gospel continues to go out to all the world, however that needs to be done. So we will all continue to pray for that and work towards that collective end. Thank you again to you, Kurt and Zach. And we will be hearing from a little bit more about missional stuff when we come to committing number four, I believe. So we will have opportunity again to be thinking about this. And notice on the chat, Kristin Vandenberg did post the story about Reframe in China. If anyone's interested, there's a little link there that you can go. Let's go to our agenda for today. Again, thanks to Kurt and Zach for leading us. And we are going to go to our agenda for the day. And you can see number 13, our agenda conclude any unfinished advisory committee matters. We're going to go to committee five first, because that includes the information about candidacy. And then we'll go to committee four. We'll break right at one, so that we'll be ready to all come together at 1:30 for the presentation of candidates. And then we'll finish up whatever is on our agenda work beyond that. So we go to committee report five. I turn the floor over to you, Gary.
Thank you, Paul. We first had the refreshing task of reviewing the Calvin University faculty reappointments. Michael La Croix spent time with us. What I found enlightening was that it's also a faith journey for these candidates for tenure as well as their academic achievements. And Michael reflected on that with us. So under Roman numeral one, we bring a recommendation for six people to receive tenure at Calvin University.
All right, that motion is on the floor. You can see the six names in front of us. The speaker queue is open. If you wish to speak to this motion, you can queue up. Anyone wishing to speak to this motion, please enter the speaker queue. Seeing no one who has done that and not hearing anyone else shout out, I think we're ready to vote on this recommendation for tenure. All in favor of granting tenure to these six individuals, please raise your hand. Thank you. You may put them down. And are there any opposed? If so, please raise your hand. All right, that motion carries.
Well, next we move on to Roman numeral two, candidates for ministry of the word. We're pleased to have Jewel Medenblick, as well as David Call and Susan McClair, spend time with us, discussing the process for candidacy. And like Kurt, we asked for some stories of how these people got to their faith position to be wanting to be ordained. As far as our recommendations go, we'll have, of course, the longer session later today. But I move now to recommendation C under Roman numeral two. At the COD, on behalf of Senate, declare the persons as candidates for ministry of the word in the Christian Reformed Church in North America, subject to completion of all remaining, if any requirements. And the list is in front of you there.
All right, that motion is on the floor. And as Gary mentioned, we'll have the opportunity to receive. At least some of these folks will be there in person and we'll hear all of their names and get to see their faces. And Susan and David will lead us through that along with Jewel. So we look forward to that this afternoon. But right now, we need to officially act to approve these names. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this motion? Any questions?
Paul, Laura Copley from Classes from Mesa.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if Gary could remind the body why there are some initials in these lists of names rather than names? Like SK and K.
We're looking at only a recommendation. Looking only at recommendation C1 right now. We'll get the initial. I'd like to take these all separately, just because it's kind of weighty in our minds.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, I would judge that we're ready to vote for declaring candidates for this year. If you're in favor of the list, please raise your hand. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Let me move on now to number two under Roman numeral two, where there are people for lengthening of their candidacy period, extending them a year. And here we do have two initials, and these are people who are working on assignments that sometimes take longer than a year to come to fruition and actually take the assignment, two of them with initials. And they are serving in, in areas that we shouldn't let their whole name be known, where they could suffer some problems because of that. But they, those two peoples with initials are progressing toward, toward a call. We're asking that the COD, on behalf of Senate, approve the following persons for candidacy extension. They've come before Senate before, and now we're just lengthening their period of candidacy.
Very good. That motion is before us as well. And the question Laura asked was answered. Any other questions or comments on this motion? I see Andy's hand.
Yes, thank you, Paul. I raised the same question at our, at our advisory committee meeting. And I made a point there, and I'd like to do it here as well, that these two individuals are living in a part of the world where being a Christian is not a good thing. And it showed me again how blessed we are to live in countries like Canada, the US, and Western Europe, that we can freely express our love for Christ and live in our, in service to him. But there's a lot of places in the world where that doesn't happen. And these two individuals show that and how conscious we still have to be that of, of the love of Christ still has to be spread in this world. I think it's just a sad thing, but it's just the fact of where our world, the place our world is in now. So to protect these two, they just have to put initials. That's just the way it has to be. But I think we should be conscious of that at all times. So we really are blessed to live in a North American situation where we can have these Zoom meetings and everything. We don't have to worry about those things. But that's not the case in all places in the world. Thanks.
Yeah, indeed, Andy. Thanks for that thought. Any other questions or thoughts on this motion for the extension of candidacy? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Number three is the reinstatement of candidacy for Lisa Meyer, who about 10 years ago was a candidate but withdrew for family reasons. But then she's been volunteering at her local church increasingly. And that's at a point now where her local church would like to offer her a position of call. And we recommend that she be reinstated as a candidate.
All right, that motion is in front of us. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
And number four is approving the action of the candidacy committee in declaration of need of the following persons for affiliation under Church Order eight. In other words, from another denomination coming into our denomination. And most of these people have positions already. I would note that this number is on the bottom side of the average of the last few years, but still represents some great faith stories that we heard in committee.
All right, very good. That motion is in front of us. Affiliation under article, Church Order, Article eight. Seeing no questions or comments, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
And the advisory committee notes that we will miss David Call in the future. But Susan already seems to be filling in very well in that area. We move on now to the finance matters, which are more familiar territory for our study group. So under Roman numeral three, the recommendations be one. At this point, the COD and Lewis Senate just receives the budget, which we went over in detail at our last meeting. And what represents probably close to half the work of our committee is just received by the Senate as three lines under number one. And I don't believe we have to vote on that. Is that correct?
With no objection, we will receive that.
And number two is the salary grid that we talked about at the last COD meeting. So I didn't feel we had to repeat discussion of that. But it is a motion that the COD, on behalf of Senate, adopt the 2021, 22 denominational salary grid for senior positions as proposed, noting that the current pay ranges reflect a 3% increase from the previous year.
All right, that motion is in front of us with the grounds. And certainly, if you were at the May COD meeting, as virtually all of us were, we had some discussion there on this as well. So it's familiar territory for those of us on the COD. Any discussion on this motion? Questions? All right, seeing and hearing none, I judge we're ready to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Moving on to number three.
And if I can just interrupt for a moment, Gary, I'm going to hand over the chair for number three to Andy, the writer. So if you could take the chair now, Andy.
All right, thank you, Paul. Go ahead, Gary.
Number three is that the COD, on behalf of Senate, take note of the COD's actions to both approve and adopt in lieu of Senate the following with regard to organizations requesting to replace on the recommended for offerings list. This is the same recommendation that came in front of the COD last month. We bring it forward now to a take note for the Senate. And it does include the exclusion of Bethany Christian. We bring it forward now to a take note for the Senate, and it does include the exclusion of Bethany Christian Services from that approved list.
All right, thank you, Gary. Are there any questions? I see any hands. Just keep your hand up or speak up. I gotta go through the three pages if I see any. All right, I see Paul, please. You're muted, Paul.
Thank you, Andy. I handed the chair over to Andy. I know we've had discussion on this as the C O D previously, but I did want to communicate to the group that I received a number of communications. Andy received a few and Colin received a few from individuals concerned about our decision. Those letters aren't officially before us. They don't really have standing in front of Senate. They're letters from individuals who were upset by the decision. And I'm speaking particularly to the exclusion of Bethany. And I know some of us had these same concerns, and we discussed them. I do not frequently as chair, in fact, I'm not sure I ever have handed over the chair to speak to an issue. And yet I do want the body to know that I share the concerns expressed by some of those individuals in the letter. I know that this is a vexing issue. But I want us to take the time to reflect on removing Bethany Christian Service from the list. I do not think that Bethany Christian Service has explicitly taken a position contrary to the denominational's position. They do not in fact state that they believe that same-sex marriage is legitimate biblically. They simply removed from their own rules the rule stipulating that marriage was between one man and one woman. And they're trying to help children as best they can in a governmental environment, which necessitates their wrestling with this issue. So, and I also note that as I look at other organizations that are on that approved list, I don't know that all of them would pass this same litmus test on this issue, and I don't think we've used it as a litmus test for other organizations. So it strikes me as we may be taking an action that against one organization that is perhaps unfairly puts an onus on them to do something that we don't ask of other organizations. I realize theirs has been more public, got a lot more publicity. It's a large organization that we're familiar with. So first, I'm not sure they're in direct violation of any stated denominational policy. I question that. And secondly, I simply think it lacks grace. It's a slap in the face to an organization that I'm sure their board members wrestled with this decision and had a difficult time making it. And now we're using our approved list of organizations for giving as a way of demonstrating our displeasure. And it is sometimes said, well, local churches and organizations, they still have the right to decide, and that's true, of course. But they would have that right to decide if we left the name on the list as well. And given that Bethany's actions have been well-publicized, local churches are going to be well-aware of these issues. They're not going to be caught unaware by some organization which is doing something nefarious or underhanded that no one knows of. So I hate to see us as a C O D in a position that seems to lack grace to a sister organization. Now, I know that there are those who feel strongly on this issue, and I understand that and I respect that. I myself, as I've made clear to my congregation in the past and to others, you know, take the traditional biblical view of marriage. I'm not pleased with what Bethany Christian Services have done. But quite honestly, I'm not always pleased with what the Christian Reformed Church of North America does. And yet I remain a supporter. And so I just think this is a wrong-headed decision for us to make, and I've taken enough time. And I do apologize if it feels like I've opened a can of worms, Andy's chair now, but chairs never like can of worms to be opened, especially if we've already been in that can of worms once before. But I just, I felt that I needed to at least say my piece, so thank you for listening. And so I speak against this motion because I do not want to see Bethany Christian Services excluded from the list.
All right, thank you for your thoughts, Paul. I'm gonna give a little bit of leeway here to talk about this. If you enter your name in the speaker queue, if you want to have a word, the owner is sending me the names. I have Mark Van Der Zandee here. You can have the floor if anybody else would like to speak, please enter the speaker queue. And Mark, floor is yours.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. I just want to note that the C O D, number three, says that the C O D on behalf of Senate, take note of the C O D's actions to both approve and adopt in lieu of Senate. We actually, as a C O D, approved this in May, and this was just, we're taking note of it as a council of delegates. It seems to me, unless I'm incorrect, that this has been decided, and we're just noting to the, in lieu of Senate this year. So I don't think we can backtrack on a decision that was made. If I'm incorrect, correct me. But I don't think we can backtrack on a decision that was made in May in regarding this. So I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that would be out of order.
Thanks for that, Mark. It would seem to me, though, that Senate would still have the final say on this. I think Senate could still, even though C O D would decide this. If we were actually sitting on the floor of Senate right now with 200 and discussing this, and Senate decided that they didn't like this, they could overrule the C O D on it.
Can I come back, Andy? So if that's the case, then if, then what would we do in lieu of, as on behalf of Senate, if we are to take note, would we not take note then? What's the other side of the question then? If we are taking note, or do we not take note? And if we don't take note, then, then what?
Well, I think that if we, everything C O D is subject to Senate approval. So, you know, when it comes to things that the corporations do and financial stuff, the corporations handle. But that still needs to be affirmed or approved by Senate. That's what we covenant together. So whether this is a take note of or asking Senate to approve, Senate, as I said, would always still have the right to overrule anything the C O D would decide. So I think this, if we are sitting as a full, as I said, as a full body of Senate, and Senate delegates didn't agree with us, they would be fully right, even though it says just take note. They could instruct the C O D to change that. Now, correct me again if I'm wrong. We all like to say that, and I'd like to Kathy for advice, but I'm pretty sure the Senate would have the final word on this. So now, since we're acting in lieu of, there's been no motion on this, so we've just had one person talk about it. Nobody has brought any other thoughts forward. So we're just kind of going around in a circle a little bit here, and we'll see where it goes, but.
Andy, may I make a suggestion?
Sure, Gary, please.
Can we separate number three into a separate take note on A, B, and D? And then if somebody wants to make a motion about C, would that be proper in Kathy's eyes?
Oh, we need a motion to split the motion. So somebody would need to make that. I don't see any.
I'm willing to make that.
All right, we have a, then we have a motion to split this motion into two, one to cover three, A, B, D.
I'll second that.
And that's seconded, and then we'll deal with three C. So let's deal with, let's get three, A, B, and D.
Andy?
Yeah, Bernie, please.
This is Bernie. My understanding is if there is a request to split the motion, it automatically happens, right? You don't vote on splitting the motion. If there is a request to split the motion, it automatically happens.
Yeah, my notes here for, my notes that I have here for calling of a division of the question that says that at the request of one or more members of Senate, a motion consisting of more than one part must be divided and voted upon separately unless Senate decides it's not necessary. Roberts rules say that it must be seconded, and there is no debate. So we're calling, so you're calling for a division of the question. So we vote on that. We don't need to vote on that? Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding, and I see nods of heads, nodding of heads in agreement.
All right.
That's Kathy's head.
Pardon?
Especially Kathy's head is nodding.
Okay, I want to have a few on my screen, so that's good. That makes me feel better right away. All right, then let's then go to the question for three, A, B, and D. And we'll have a raise of hands to approve that. So show your hands, please. Keep them up for a minute. All right, thank you. Any opposed the same? Seeing none, then the motion to approve three, A, B, and D is carried. Then we go to three C, which is the inclusion of Bethany Christian Services exclusion from the non-denominational list.
Andy?
Andy, this is Bruce. I did have my hand up in, not in favor of this, okay? So you can't say that there was none that opposed.
All right, I missed that, Bruce. I'm sorry. I gotta flick through three screens and watch the chat at the same time.
That's, that's.
I apologize. I apologize for missing you, then we'll make sure that it was not, the minutes will show it was not unanimous. Sorry about that. I heard another voice as well.
Andy, this is Lori Harkema. Can I request that we vote on this using the yes and no voting?
Absolutely. We can do that. Is there any other person who would like to speak to this motion dealing with three C?
I would, Andy, it's Beth.
Please, Beth, go ahead.
Thanks, Andy. Beth Banstrip, V C Southeast. I would like to make a motion that the C O D, as Senate, ask the Council of Delegates to reconsider exclusion of Bethany Christian Services at their October 2021 meeting.
We have a motion on the floor right now. I think we need to deal with that first.
Okay.
And if that's, if that's, depending which way that's voted upon by this body, then you could entertain that second motion. I think we need to deal with this first motion first.
Andy, Laura Copley. There are a list of people in your speaker queue, Andy.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering, what is the motion on the floor? If you could just reclarify, I'm confused what the motion exactly is.
Okay, I'll read that, Lori, and then I got Tyler next. Well, as it stands in the notes here, that the C O D on behalf of Senate, take note of C O D's actions to approve and adopt in lieu of Senate the following with regard to the organization's request to be placed on the recommended for offerings list. So then we just had, we're just dealing with C, that we exclude then Bethany Christian Services. So that's what the motion is right now. So you vote yes if you want to have it excluded, you vote no if you do not want to have it excluded. That would be the question in front of us, okay? I got Tyler, and then I have John Lee.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You're not, we're not, we're, it seems to me that we are making a motion to take note of it, not to exclude or not to include. The motion on the floor is to take note. And if you vote against this motion, it seems to me that you are voting to not take note of this. And then we have a whole new other motion that needs to happen, I think. So the wording of the motion is critical, I believe, here in this setting. It's not to adopt or to, it's to take note of the C O D's actions. So I think the wording is essential here, and I think we, if we say we're just excluding them or including them, we're jumping to the next step, though we are, the motion is to take note of the C O D's actions. So you vote on yes, we're taking note of this, or no, we don't take note of this. And then if that is declined, then we have to go in another direction, one way or the other. So that, just a point of order on a clarification level there.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Mark. It should be the other way around than what I just said then, so. Okay, thank you for that. I've got Tyler, and then I have John Lee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, in many ways, think Mark just clarified what I, the point I was going to make and say this was decided in our last C O D meeting. And I, you know, I understand where Paul is speaking to this, but really, this should have been something that he laid the chair down and talked about last time when we talked about it. It's, it's a bit unnerving and disturbing that this is brought up again after a lot of wrangling and heartache last time. So we're voting to take note or not, the decision was made. So again, I would just encourage us to take note of our decision.
All right, thank you for that, Tyler. Apparently I missed Bernie, so we'll have Bernie next, and then John Lee, and then Sheri.
No, I already, I already spoke, Andy, passed.
All right, thank you then, Bernie. John?
Yeah, I would speak in favor of the motion. I agree with what Tyler said, regardless of the merits of this. It just, this process feels uncomfortable for me to be relitigating a very close vote to see if we can get a different vote this time. I understand we're working in a different capacity, but we're the same body just months later, and it just, it doesn't feel like good process. And I would also remind the body, when we're taking note of this, we're not, I see this as an action simply that where the denomination is neutral towards Bethany. In my neck of the woods, there were many who were upset by what Bethany did. And if they remain on the list, that's, that's an endorsement saying, you know, deacons take from this list, you know, these have been vetted for you. And that's just not the case. And if Bethany would remain, that list would cease to have its function in my part of the world because people would just no longer trust the list. And so I think churches can take offerings or not, but this list has a very specific purpose of saying, these are ones without objection that we commend to all the churches. And I think Bethany's action just simply objectively is, has no longer have that ability to speak that word about them. So again, I hate to relitigate this. That's my two cents. I do speak in favor of taking note.
All right, thanks for that, John. Sheri next, and then Sheila.
John and Tyler said what I wanted to say, so I just would ask that we take, call for the vote on taking note of what was done.
All right, you're calling for the vote? Is that what you are doing?
Yes.
All right, then I have two more in the speaker queue, and then we'll go to the vote. So Sheila, and then I have Jay.
I'm not in favor of this motion, and I want us to be reminded, even though we were C O D and we discussed it, and we did, we made a decision. We are here in lieu of Senate. And even for our, those who are listening to us have not heard the discussions of the C O D. But I think we need to be reminded, we are here in lieu of Senate and not the C O D. And so I think we need to proceed in that mindset.
All right, thank you, Sheila. And the last one I have on the list is Jay, and then we'll go to the question.
Yeah, I, the suggestion, I mean, what if we just go ahead and vote to, to take note or not to take note, whatever your conscience, wherever your conscience leads you, and then if we could just have a motion after that to to ask the Senate or on behalf of Senate to reconsider or extend the C O D, which I know sounds weird because we are the C O D, but, you know, basically to send the question back to C O D to reconsider, and then we could vote on that.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. We're gonna go to the question, and I think that kind of was brought up already. The question now is that we take note of this action, and if that passes, then that's the end of it. If it doesn't pass, then the floor is open to new motions, of course, or new ideas. That's the way, Mark, is that am I right now? Yeah, so we're gonna go, we're gonna go to the question. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go to the question and we're gonna use the voting queue. So the question is then for us for the, uh, C O D on behalf of Synod to take note of the action of the exclusion of Bethy Christian Services. So go to your voting queue and vote yes, uh, to take note and vote no if you don't agree. If you can't get to the voting queue, the queue is in the chat if you need it.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we vote by a raise of hands?
You can take note of your vote. If you can't get through the queue, you can send it to, uh, the owner as well in the chat and then she can count it there. To send, to send your vote.
Can you send it to Shirley DeVries instead of?
Shirley, yeah, that's fine. Sorry. Should be, should be up in a second. All right, the, uh, we have that in and the motion is, has carried. All right, then, uh, that's it for number three. And then we'll go to, back to number four and I'll turn the, uh,
Andy.
Yeah.
Can I register my negative vote? This is Lori from Lake Erie.
Yes, of course, that will be, that'll be registered.
I want to register mine too.
All right, thank you also. We'll do that. Sorry, I missed that one. Sheila as well, thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to register my negative vote.
Thank you Frederick, we'll do that.
I would like to as well. Jeanne Englehart.
Jeanne, yeah, thank you. All right, thank you for that. Um, thanks for your help with figuring that out. Appreciate it. I'll turn the chair back over to Paul and we'll move then to number four on our agenda.
Thanks Andy. Appreciate you serving his chair on that and, um, it, it's fun sometimes to be on the other side of the chair and to be able to cause trouble for the chair, Andy, than, uh, to, to be the other way around.
But I sometimes worry about having you in the crowd next year when I'm going to be in the chair, what it's gonna be like.
I promise to behave, I promise to behave myself, Andy. But in all seriousness, I appreciate the body taking the time to, um, wrestle once again. And I acknowledge again the awkwardness of the C O D acting on C O D matters. But, uh, thank you for your time and attention to the matter. So Gary, we're back to you.
I'm on number four under the, uh, Finance Matters, half of page four. At the C O D on behalf of Synod, take note of the C O D's confirmation that the investments of the agencies and institutions of the denomination are in compliance with denominational investment policy. And I would point out that we reviewed this at the February C O D meeting. Uh, it came from the Support Services Committee. And this is just to take note that the investments, uh, are in in accordance with synatical policy.
Right. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor of taking note of that, please raise your hand. All right, thank you. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
And number five is again a repeat of what we did at C O D a month ago, that the C O D on behalf of Synod take note of C O D's endorsement of the following actions of the pensions trustees. And I do not intend to read that unless somebody wants it read.
All right, so motion five A and B are in front of us. And again, this is a taking note of the C O D's endorsement of the actions of the pension trustees. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing or hearing none, please raise your hand if you're in favor. All right, thank you. Are there any opposed? Please raise your hand. All right, that motion carries.
And I'd like to take Roman numerals four and five as a unit. And I'd like to ask John Bolt if you could give us just a couple of words of explanation about what's going on here.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, yeah, in item four B, our recommendation is that up to a hundred percent of the amounts paid out of the minister's pension plan to retirees or those who've gone out on disability pensions, uh, be eligible for housing. This is a U S only uh, benefit that's part of the IRS tax code. So for, uh, Roman numeral four, this relates to the defined benefit ministers pension. In Roman numeral five, it relates to the four oh three B nine, which is a new plan that was introduced uh, January of twenty twenty. It's primarily, uh, used by the commissioned pastors who are in denominational, uh, employment. Our executive director being one of them. And what this now does is any distributions from that plan uh, beginning July one and going forward, uh, also are eligible for the housing up to a hundred percent of the distribution to the extent it's used for housing. And again, this is an IRS, uh, regulation.
All right, so it's my understanding, Gary, that you're moving these two recommendations together, correct?
If that's okay with the body.
Okay, it will be unless someone wants to split them. So these are two recommendations that are in front of the body. Any questions or concerns? I have Drew Sweetman in the queue.
Thanks, Paul. Um, I, I think it's obvious through the motion, but I just want to clarify there are non-ordained people in the five oh, for the four oh three B nine that are not eligible for the housing allowance. Is that correct?
Yes, it's only for those who are ordained, uh, that they can use this benefit. And that would include uh, commissioned pastors or any ministers of the word who are using this as a supplemental plan.
And that's an IRS rule, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the question or the clarification, Drew. And I see Bev Banstra in the queue.
Thanks, Paul. I'm wondering if we could use the, the voting queue for this so that the Canadians, uh, can abstain from voting on a totally U S matter?
We always honor anyone who wants us to use the, uh, voting queue.
Can I, can I say something here, Paul? We do have Canadians who participate in the U S plan. So that does impact anybody coming out of the U S plan.
Okay, thank you for that, John. But we will, we will use the voting queue. Any member has a right to ask for that and I'd always honor that.
I have a question for clarification around that.
Yes.
So would this be different with C O D acting in lieu of Synod than acting as C O D in terms of Canadian and U S participation in that?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, Heather. Um, I don't ever recall Synod in any way wearing corporate hats while they're at Synod, um, and act on things, although we do sometimes take specific actions on U S. But this is actually a, a matter that's required. Uh, in order to meet U S tax law, it is unique to the U S. But as John just pointed out, it doesn't uh, only involve U S people. Regardless of that, I think it's fair to say that this motion is going to pass. So let's, let's give some grace to anyone who wishes to abstain, perhaps out of an abundance of caution. Um, but it's a motion, um, that I assume is going to pass. So let's go ahead and vote on this. Uh, using the, uh, yes, no voting link. Please vote yes or no. We're voting on both of these recommendations. All right, that motion passed.
And Mr. President, that concludes the report of, uh, rise of V five.
All right, thank you very much for your, uh, work, Gary, and for you, John, and for the others on that, uh, team and, uh, our finance people on both sides of the border. Uh, we thank you for, um, the finance work as well as, of course, uh, the candidacy work, which we approved before that. We are going to continue meeting until one and so we have, uh, opportunity now to go to our committee four advisory report. Uh, our committee four report. And, uh, David Struck is going to, uh, lead us in this, but I'm wondering, as I see Michelle's name there as well, have, has anyone heard anything further from Michelle? Do we have any update? I see Andy shaking his head no, so I'm assuming not. Let's just continue to remember her and her family um, in our prayers as we go to Advisory Committee four. We already did number one. Uh, that was the approval that I simply just granted and we experienced that this morning. So I'll turn it over to you, David.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I just, uh, ask permission for Zach and Kurt to, um, have the floor if needed for, uh, recommendation two, uh, B one. Um, that's the C O D on behalf of Synod approved the evaluation report presented by Refrain Ministries and Resonate Global Mission with regard to the global mission calling area. Um, this is something that we've gone through before as far as a C O D. Um, probably don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but I think our committee feels like for all the time and the effort that goes into a report like this, just to make sure that we don't, uh, gloss over it that way. And so, um, Zach and Kurt, if there's, uh, any little statement that you want to make or any other, uh, parts of it you want to highlight for us, uh, I want to give you guys the opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, yeah, I'll just, uh, scroll to the, see if I have, have it up here. Scroll to the end of the report, I believe it is, um, let's see what page. Page fourteen, uh, fifteen for, for resonate. Yeah, I just wanted to draw your attention to, if you look at your advisory, advisory committee agenda on page fifteen, you'll see, uh, the four pieces of, of how resonates, uh, work on behalf of the denomination and mission connect to the four milestones. You'll remember that Colin gave a, a presentation at his, um, during his presentation, he talked about the four milestones and he mentioned uh, each of them in turn. And I, I want to draw your attention to the work of resonate in each one of those milestones. So although milestone four, share the gospel, live it missionally and plant new churches, certainly um, an area where resonate has a lot of focus. I just wanted, uh, the group here to note that, uh, as a mission agency, resonate is engaging in, in the other four milestones. And that connects to what I've shared several times with you about our ministry priorities, which are developed in tandem with, um, with the milestone. So, you know, just very briefly, uh, under milestone number one on page fifteen of the, uh, agenda for Advisory Committee four, you'll see cultivate practices of prayer and spiritual discipline. And just note there that, uh, resonate through its, um, processes for missional, missional church renewal and, and missional engagement of community is really leaning into, uh, that work of, uh, helping churches discern their, their, their call, their spirit call in their neighborhoods, um, both, uh, locally uh, and internationally. So that is something that we're doing through a couple of programs that we have. Uh, the second one, listening to the voices of every generation, we've identified as a mission agency, the focus on, um, uh, youth, young adult and lay leadership as something where we want to really are wanting to step into. So we have several programs, one called Cohort in which we're recruiting, uh, leaders both, uh, from North America, young leaders both from North America and, uh, from the places where the cohort functions around the world, um, both in North America and internationally to really grow in their missional calling. And, uh, so that's there as well. Growing in diversity and unity, of course, reflects resonates work amongst the six identified, uh, groups, ethnic groups in the Christian Reform Church. Uh, the work of church planning, the work of diaspora and ethnic ministry that we engage in. And so that's happening in that third milestone. And then of course, the fourth milestone, share the gospel, live it missionally, plant new churches speaks to the work of evangelism. Um, uh, leadership development, especially church planning that continues both locally and internationally. So just wanted you to all be aware that, uh, that your mission agency is working in four of those milestone areas.
Yep, thanks Zach. Um, Kurt, did you want to highlight anything from, um, the report?
No, uh, I don't really have anything to add. I had my three-point sermon back in the, uh, Special Advisory Committee number four. I won't, uh, I won't do that again, but just to say that I'm grateful that the committee thought more, uh, intentionally about the process and maybe some, uh, opportunity to pause and look at the process kind of midway through uh, the five-year cycle of assessment. So I'll let the, I'll let the assessments, uh, speak for itself.
Okay, thanks Kurt. So, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions, um, regarding number one, uh, we move that.
Okay, um, under Roman numeral two B one, um, approve the evaluation report for reframe and resonate. Any questions? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. And are there any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Let me just, uh, also thank Kurt and Zach for their, um, devotions and presentation this morning. And as I was watching that, I was asking the question, um, how can I make use of those videos for the churches in my classes, uh, back home and, uh, because I think it's a great opportunity again to, uh, share the good things that are happening with both of the ministries. So let me just encourage the, uh, delegates to ask themselves whether there's opportunities back home, um, to make use of those videos and keep promoting and sharing the good work that, uh, these ministries are doing that way. Uh, then number two comes out of a little bit Kurt made reference to that. As we reflected on all the work and the energy that went into these evaluation reports, there were some questions as to, uh, who the target, uh, really was for these reports, what's, what's the outcome, the, the purpose, et cetera. Um, some of you may know that, uh, this process started in two thousand eighteen. Um, making these kind of reports, since then, we've had new, um, executive directors. Um, and so we ended up, uh, proposing this motion that the C O D on behalf of Synod instruct the executive director to review the four-year program evaluation process to clarify the purpose, outcome, goals and metrics to be used and bring any recommended revisions to the C O D for consideration to the current policy. And then we list some grounds that way. And so we'd like to move that.
All right, number two is in front of us then. Any questions or conversation on this? All right, seeing and hearing none, let's vote. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a quick does this, is this specifically for, for resonate and reframe, or is this a process that would, is this review something that would apply across all the agencies?
I think it's meant to, it's meant to be a review for all the agencies.
Okay.
For them to do that.
All right. Thanks for jumping in there. I don't want to miss anyone. Were there any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, let's vote. This is number two. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries.
And so then we're up to one of our challenging conversations, number three. We give some background to that and then make a recommendation. I'm assuming that everybody's read the background for that. One other piece maybe to add to that is we had Sean Baker from the Pastor Church Resources with us, and he spent a little bit of time talking about the challenging conversation toolkit and how that's being used in the churches and and some of the good responses that they've experienced from that. And yet, the number of congregations that have used the toolkit is is probably a bit on the low end. More Canadian churches are using the toolkit than US churches. But I think it was helpful for us as a committee to hear, hear of that resource. And then we also talked and heard from Laine Kilbreth, who is part of the Lantern Community CRC, and he shared a little bit of the background to the overture. And I think some in our committee did feel the the concerns that were raised by those in that fellowship and and so i- in response, we're making recommendation one that the COD on behalf of Synod accede to Overture seventeen and instruct the Executive Director to develop and implement a mechanism or forum that would allow LGBTQ voices to be heard by the delegates to Synod 2022 with regard to that HSR report. And so I'd move that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that motion is in front of us. Dave, if I can ask just a question for clarification or process, did the committee talk at all about what that might look like for the Executive Director to do this, or is it pretty much just up to Colin to begin working on if we approve this?
Talked very briefly about you know, some of the possible resources. We did make a note there that the challenging conversation toolkits more effective for congregations, but it's not really set up for a classist or a larger group to use. And so maybe refining that for classist discussions or whether, whether some discussion even takes place at Synod would be a possibility.
Okay.
But nothing specifically.
Okay, and specifically, the motion is asking him to work on how delegates to Synod would hear it.
Correct.
I see. Yep, thank you. Okay. Those who would like to speak to the recommendation, I have Laura Copley. You're still muted, Laura.
My bad. Can you hear me now? So, Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions first for clarification, and then may I speak to the motion, or do I first do clarification and then get back into the speaker queue and speak to the motion?
We will be gracious to you unless we grow tired of you, Laura, and then we'll just cut you off. No, go ahead and ask your questions for clarification.
Okay, so two, so the two questions I have is, one, it, it says here, the recommendation is that we accede to the Overture seventeen, and yet the actual overture reads quite substantively different from the recommendation that we have before us. So is the word actually to accede? Or isn't this kind of a different thing that the committee is presenting?
As we discussed, the way the overture was written, I think we noted that there maybe were some weaknesses in how it was written. And and I think our judgment was that we are acceding to their request. And they weren't specific, again, about how to do this. And so that's why the Executive Director would be assigned to develop and implement the mechanism for it.
Okay. And then I'm also, a second question is, can you help me understand the difference between like an overture that has just been sent by a congregation, sort of without the endorsement or the, the, the whole classes there? And an overture that is sent through a whole classes? I'm wondering, how do we process that difference, or what's the difference in, in weight there?
I don't think there's any real difference in weight. The explanation that was given to our committee was that because of COVID, their classes did not process any overtures. And so I think it sounded like there were several overtures that the classes were responsible to process, but because of COVID, they didn't respond to any of them. And so, so my understanding is that it wasn't voted down, it just wasn't even voted on.
Okay, so, so this may be a little, oh, Heather, did did you have something? You're a part of that classes, right?
Yes, I'm from that classes, and that is true. Any, any overtures that came to our classes in the spring that were connected to the Human Sexuality Report were, were deferred because the report wasn't coming to Synod. So this did not come before classes Alberta, South Saskatchewan.
Okay, so it's officially before us, but just from the congregation without any classes up or down vote. And you had an observation or you wanted to speak to the motion as well, right, Laura?
Yeah, yeah. So, well, actually, one, one observation is and I'm not exactly sure what to do with this. I just, something that I observed is that, so there were seven classes that represented like twenty-seven thousand, one hundred people roughly in, who have persons in attendance every Sunday, according to our 2021 statistics. This, this particular overture is, represents eight people in attendance on a given Sunday. I mean, I, I know we don't look at numbers, especially like if it was a petition, but just given what overtures that overtures do represent, you know, the proper way of, of going forward. With concerns, there were twenty-seven thousand folks concerned, and this represents eight. But, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak against this motion for, for, for three reasons. Number one, I'm concerned about precedent. My understanding is that time and space for any believer, whether same-sex attracted or not, is to share perspective through our regular processes of our assemblies. So the formal mechanisms are already in place, and the informal mechanisms are strong. So to set up a precedent that along with a study report will come a select panel of people to share the impact on them, I think could turn Synod into something that it's not really designed for. Secondly, I want to look at maybe the issue of prejudging an issue. If there was a panel of believers to share how this report affects them, then it would seem to me that we would need broader representation. We would need to hear from those in premarital sexual relationships, in extramarital sexual relationships, in polyamorous relationships, those who are single, divorced, addicted to pornography, those in the porn industry, those in adulterous relationships, et cetera, because the report handles such a large scope. And by choosing some voices and not others who are affected by the report seems to prejudge the matter, especially when the point of the report, the report was not to litigate the position of nineteen seventy-three, but rather to articulate a biblical foundation. And then my final reason I I would vote no to this motion is when it comes to this word authority. So in my in my class that I teach at high school, we look at how the word authority comes from the word author. And so I can present a poem before my high school students, and we can all debate the meaning of the poem, but then if I invite the author in, she can tell us its true meaning. She's the authority. Or we can all look at the laptops we're sitting in front of, and we could debate, you know, what it's for. And, and I, I feel like I have a very aerodynamic laptop, and it would make a great frisbee. But then the author, you know, maybe Steve Jobs comes in, and he tells me how he designed the laptop and what it's for. He's the authority. Now, church order is clear that we recognize our author as the authority in the deliberations of Synod. And the tricky bit is that we live in a culture that operates on a basis that says our lived experience is the authority. And because that culture is the natural waters we swim in, we're easily overwhelmed by experience and feelings, and so we privilege it. Now, we asked a committee of individuals to take five years to study to look into these matters, and they came up with a hundred and fifty pages of intense scrutiny and text, of, of the text and of experience as well. And we know, though, that we're in a time and place in history where a person's experience can have far more weight. So one specific example, and then I'll close. You know, it can be hard to read through that hundred and fifty pages of material. It's been taking me a long time actually to get through it. And we will not be assured that every delegate at Synod next year will actually have been able to read through it all, much less, you know, the thousand pages of divine text that, that we have. But should this recommendation pass, we would be assured that, that even if every delegate hasn't actually gone through the report, they will have heard each of these of, of, of the, of the panel of experiences. For a Synod that says its decisions are settled and binding unless proven contrary by the word of God and the church order, I think it's fitting for us to recognize in our cultural moment, and this is just for this cultural moment, I don't think it's been universally, but how easily stories, feelings and experiences can overwhelm the foundations that the author designer has laid in his story. So before Synod meets, I think all voices need to come to the table, and I was impressed in the report how much they did have so many different voices and so many different experiences with every point. But when Synod meets, according to our church order, we do privilege one voice, one word. And that's why I would be not going with this motion.
Thank you, Laura. I have six speakers on our list. I ask you to be on point and concise, please. Tyler, William and Mark.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to take note that this overture, which comes from that individual church, Lantern Community Church, I know it's, and it was mentioned by others, part of classes Alberta, South Saskatchewan, back in two thousand and sixteen with the agenda for Synod, the same classes, and perhaps even by this same church, we aren't told that, in many ways, sent a very similar overture, asking Synod to appoint advisors, LGBT plus members. And, and so Synod dealt with this back in two thousand and sixteen. I think it would be helpful to actually read the decision of, of Synod. It's very brief. It says that Synod not accede to Overture Three, Recommendation A, grounds, and it lists five grounds. The category of same-sex oriented as well as the categories of sexual minority person and LGBT plus person as used in the overture are broad and not well-defined. The overture does not define the qualifications and characteristics for members in this category of advisor, and neither do the rules of synatical procedure. Ground B, in addition, sexuality and sexual identities have moral dimensions that other categories of advisors of Synod do not. Ground C, even within these gender and sexuality-related categories, there are differences of opinion and disposition among people in those categories. D, identifying suitable candidates will be problematic since many faithful people in this category may not wish to be publicly identified. And then E, the characterization of same-sex oriented people in the same manner as ethnic minorities is particularly offensive to many ethnic minorities. So, Mr. Chairman, that was a decision of Synod that was adopted when the same thing requested in many ways from the same, the same classes, in this instance, not even the classes, individual congregation, Synod turned that down. And so I think we would be wise to continue in that. We have no, no reason in many ways, probably, I would say, not even the authority to, to overturn the decision of, of Synod two thousand and sixteen in regards to this. And I think they've given us the reasons right there why this recommendation is not a good one. So I'd speak against, in opposition to this recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tyler, William, Mark and then Bruce.
I'd like to speak against the motion, and I'll be voting against the motion. I think that Synod twenty twenty-two should be a discussion of the biblical interpretation and the biblical foundations in accordance with the mandate of the Study Committee. I think it would be inappropriate for the COD to attempt to stage that discussion and that deliberation and that assembly in this way. So I'm going to speak against the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, William, Mark, Bruce and Kelly.
I'm going to speak against the motion as well. But I do have, if it does carry, I would like to to add something to the recommendation one, and just at the end to protect Colin, so to speak, is would this be a friendly amendment? And David, you can respond to that. This mechanism or forum would be approved by the COD meeting in February of two thousand and twenty-two. So Colin would present that. If this is approved, would Colin, I think, be benefited by the COD approving the, the forum and mechanism? And having that approved by February of two thousand, at the February two thousand and twenty-two Council of Delegate Meetings?
I would believe that is a friendly amendment or addition to it.
Okay. I do vote, I'm going to vote against the motion, but just to save Colin's backside a little bit, wanted to make sure he's protected on that.
All right, we can have that as an understanding. Mark?
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, Kelly, Heather.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I, I did want to make sure that, you know, I took note that this was not unanimous bringing. I did vote against it before. I, I do speak against it now, basically for really all the reasons that, that Laura brought out. And it's impossible or not correct in only, if you were going to allow, to only allow one set of people to speak. There is a myriad of different people that could speak. It would not be proper. And as William said, it's, it's not exactly speaking to what the report is supposed to. So I do speak against the motion. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. I have Kelly, Heather and John.
Thank you much. I guess I, before, I'm not sharing where I'm, I'm leaning. I guess I have more of a question of why if, as I read this recommendation, why are we not asking classes to have these conversations? Because if I think of the Because if I think of the delegates coming to Synod 22, unless my understanding is completely wrong on the role, the role is to voice that of classes. And if we're already at the endpoint, some voices may be swayed. But it seems like it would be more appropriate to ask that the Director develop and implement something within the local and the classes level so that those conversations can be had, as opposed to now we're at the time, now we have to vote. But before we vote, let's hear some other, you know, let's hear from people. I guess I'm trying to figure out what the goal there is, if it's waiting till the very end before we vote. I don't see the benefit of that.
Thanks, Kelly. Response, David?
I think that could actually be part of the process, Kelly. And that comes up, that these forums are, conversations take place within classes. And that, again, a toolkit is revised or developed for that. I think one of the themes that we heard, again, touched me, I guess, is the need for safe conversations. And from both Sean with being a coach for some of these conversations, and then from the Lantern Community CRC. We can think that it's easy to have these conversations. But there is a sense, there's a question, there's a need for those involved to feel safe to have them. And then if I could make one other comment, Mr. Chairman, you know, I go back to what Advisory Committee Number One put in their report. And it says, as COD, we urgently request all congregations to prayerfully maintain unity, to live within the process procedures of our covenant. And then it says, this includes taking a posture of listening to each other and to those with whom we disagree. And I think that's really the essence of what's being proposed here is just let's keep talking and make sure we're providing opportunities for those kind of conversations.
Thank you. I have three speakers on the list, and we're like eight minutes away from our break. So we'll hear these three speakers. And then if we're ready to vote, we will, but I don't want to rush the process. So if you'd like to still speak to the motion, now would be the time to get yourself on the speaker queue. And then we'll just pick that queue up after lunch. So we're just about at the point where, as a group, we're going to have to make a decision. Are we ready to vote or aren't we? All right? I just want to alert everyone to time. I have three speakers currently, Heather, John, and then Melissa. Go ahead, Heather.
So I do speak in favor of this motion. And I want to emphasize again that this came from the Lantern Church only because Classes Alberta South did not deal with any overtures that they felt were connected to the Human Sexuality Report. And so this doesn't come because classes didn't forward, didn't approve, didn't endorse. So I just want to clarify that piece. And I also want to clarify that the request acknowledges that there needs to be good conversation leading up to Synod. But also that there may be some who haven't had opportunity to hear the fullness of perspectives. So their desire is to just encourage those safe conversations and a listening stance.
Thank you, Heather. I have John, Melissa, Bernie, and Ralph. So John?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of listening, but I'd like to oppose this motion because I think actually it intentionally works against this sort of deliberative process that we need to listen well to one another at Synod and to the Holy Spirit through Scripture. I would just echo, I think, conceptually, this proposal isn't well-formulated. It's very vague, and approving vague things are maybe easy to do, but not helpful in the long run. I would note, again, that the report is broad and that this is calling for the lived experience of only one class of people to be given a special place to listen to. And I think if we're going to go down that road, we need to go down the entire reports of those involved. So I think that that, just conceptually, that there's ambiguity there. You know, if this was only to call for listening within the church, I think that's already been done. In fact, Synod 2016, in explicitly rejecting the sort of posture that we're being asked to adopt here, inviting sexual minorities and an advisory role to speak to an issue, did say classes and councils or congregations are to do that. And so I would speak against this, a substitute motion would be to remind kids and classes of the admonishment of Synod 2016 to listen well. I think that's what we're trying to do. But if we're trying to import non-delegated voices to Synod, I think that actually works against the central decision of Synod 2016. Synod 2019, which is another thing that this proposal pointed to, does talk for the importance of dialogue, but it's dialogue between delegates. And I think importing outside voices that haven't been prayerfully vetted and chosen by churches and classes, that have been chosen because of a narrow identity, and then have those voices speaking, again, chosen by a centralized authority, is going to create the sort of anxiety that's going to make it hard to listen. And I would rather trust the Holy Spirit to work through churches and classes to delegate prayerful people who will not come as representatives of a classes, but as brothers and sisters in Christ, prayerfully committed together to discern the Spirit's voice in Scripture. And so again, I speak favor of this is the way to do it.
Thank you, John. We are going to break for lunch. I have four people in the queue. I want to honor the lunch deadline. And I have a feeling more people might continue to be added as we talk. And so I want to honor the process. I don't want to feel like we're all rushing so we can get to lunch. So, Theona, would you take note that we have Melissa Van Dyke, Bernie Baker, Ralph Wigboldus, and Elsa Fenema on the list now? I don't know if that will carry over after lunch, or will it?
Yes, I can take care of that.
Okay, good. And please, as delegates, the danger always in breaking in the middle of a discussion is that we have the same discussion over again after our break. So let's remember, we've already spent considerable time on this issue. And we'll all do our best to be on point when we come back to this. So in just a moment, we're going to have prayer that will be led by Wendell. And then we will break for either a late breakfast or a perfectly on-time lunch or a little bit late lunch, depending on where you may be. Please be promptly back at 1:30 because we will be receiving our delegates. And that's always one of the high points, not quite as exciting virtually as it is in person, but we will do our best with it. So with that, Wendell, will you close this session in prayer? And then we'll be adjourned till 1:30 Eastern Time.
Let's go before our Lord. Lord, we come before you this afternoon. And once again, for some of us, it's afternoon, for some of us, it's still morning. But Lord, we come before you, the Creator of heaven and earth. And we want to thank you, Lord, for your faithfulness. We started off this session yesterday with an account of your faithfulness through all generations, your faithfulness to your people when they sought you. And so we seek you once again this afternoon as we prepare to go to our afternoon discussion as we take a little time of break here, Lord. We want to thank you for your faithfulness to global missions, to the candidates that we see that are being brought up for ministers, to become ministers of the Word here in our denomination. And we thank you for refraining, for the work that they are concluding in Haiti and that their people are landing well there, Lord. What a blessing it is to see the work you're doing throughout the world. We pray for those who are under persecution right now, Father. We were reminded of that this morning. We pray for the Chinese ministry as they're facing hardship. Watch over them and protect them. And now bless us as we take this time to get a little bit refreshed again. And may we come back refreshed, ready to do the work of your church, to your glory. In your name we pray. Amen.